Okay, cool. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to a halt at 6:33 PM. Uh, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we are, guys, when we are done with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like everybody to remain standing. We're gonna do a moment of silence for someone, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, so, two days ago, a new member, starting in, in November, of the Board of Education lost their husband. Molly Smith is that member, and I would like to hold a, a moment of silence for her and her family at the passing of her husband. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, so we're gonna do roll call. Actually, before we do roll call, I wanted to thank Dr. Moreno, and Thicke Linda, Amy, and who else went to go see Molly yesterday?
Rachel.
Rachel. Thank you so much for doing that. I really appreciate it. I know the board appreciates it. And we support our people, our students, our parents, and even future board members.
I went, mine was communicated to her.
Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to share on that note, one of, one of Molly's kids has been in our building for three years now. And it's been hard for him to open up. But the first person he asked for yesterday was our social worker. And he went right out there. He went out there again today when the child was asking for him. And so, I know we just had convocation and talking about how impactful educators are, but I just, it really was a, a very sad moment, but also like, this is the power that he had. The first person he asked for was a school employee. So, it was just, thank you for saying that, but it was really special that we were able to, and especially him especially was able to help us.
Yeah, and I'd like to just say really quickly, you know, we're gonna continue to offer as much support as we can as a district to Molly and her family. And, uh, just honestly, thanks Scott. You, you two and Rachel, thanks for stepping up. What was the social worker's name?
Dion Granada.
Okay. And please give the board's thanks to Dion.
I love it.
Please, thank you. Okay, let's do roll call. Let's start with Sue.
Sue Gaddick.
Thank you, Tom Rossin.
Steve Boggs.
Debbie Calley.
Vinnie Canadella.
Robert Gar.
Mike Husa.
Joe Iachy.
Okay. Any amendments to the agenda? All right, we'll just move right on to information, information items. Anything there? All right, so let's move again right on to the approval of minutes. Do we, can we just do, now we can. Let's do one by one, because I actually, if we have members that need to abstain, we need to abstain. So let's start with, uh, 3A, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Ed meeting on 6/24/2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Abstained. Mike, Steve's gonna abstain, I'll abstain. And motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Ed Special Meeting on 7/10/2025.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Ed Retreat on 8/5/2025.
Any discussion on this one? Oh, sorry. Jumped, jumped. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstained? And Jones didn't abstain? Motion carries. And last one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Ed Special Meeting on 8/19/2025.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm gonna abstain. Any other abstained extensions?
Joe.
So, there's three extensions. So me, Joe, and Steve. I was in Bar Harbor. I'd still like to be there.
The 7/10 one, I guess, I...
I mean, wearing the sweatshirt.
7/10?
7/10.
7/10 abstained.
Okay. Audience of citizens, do we have anybody that like, that would like to speak? Please.
Do you want me to stand, or am I okay over here?
You're okay right there. Just, uh, name and address.
All right. Lisa Satilli, One Sarah Drive, Oxford, Connecticut. My name's Lisa Satilli. I'm president of the Booster Club. On tonight's agenda, action item E, regarding discussion and possible action regarding suspension of board policy number 5900, fundraising activities and administration regulation number 5900-r, pursuant to the Board of Education bylaws 9314 and for the limited purpose for allowing the Quarterback Club to conduct door-to-door fundraising during daylight hours for one day only on Saturday, September 7, 2025. If this policy is being considered for amendment, I would like to believe that we could also include the Booster Club, not just the Quarterback Club. At this time, we have about four teams that could benefit from door-to-door fundraising opportunities such as raffle tickets, we have pretzel sales, and car wash tickets. Since the Booster Club was not made aware of this request beforehand, they just saw this last night. The proposed date of September 7th is not a viable option for our groups, but I would like to suggest that if the policy be amended to allow weekends, daylight-only door-to-door fundraising for all Booster Club organizations and the Quarterback Club, or anybody else in the district, or, or leave the policy as it currently stands. I just wanted to let you guys know that we also have other besides Quarterback Club and other groups.
So normally, I wouldn't respond in audience of citizens, but I am gonna now. Anytime you have something you wanna do, just bring it, and we'll, we'll, we're gonna follow the same procedure that we did. With the Quarterback Club, you're gonna most likely get approved. I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Can I answer back, like an idea?
We're gonna keep it short for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. So, just like when we do dine-outs, we don't allow our groups under there to do the same night for a dine-out. So if a group wanted to go out on, say, a Saturday or Sunday, they'd have, we would, they would have to let us know because we wouldn't allow four groups to go out in one day. Because that would just be like crazy for the town. So, I, I just think to have to keep coming to the board is just amended to allow it all the time.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak for Ralph, but if you could just give us a list of dates, I'm sure we could work something out.
Right, I mean, the policy prohibits it. So, we have, the only way we can suspend the policy event by event until the policy's changed.
That's right, could you change the policy?
We're not sure we wanna do that.
Okay.
Because there's some safeguards. If you look at the backup, we had to put safeguards in place. There's a history to it here in the community, so we wanna be sensitive to that, so.
Yeah.
But we would gladly consider any other requests.
Yeah, and our, our policy subcommittee chair is not here.
Okay.
So it's definitely something that we can talk about and continue the conversation for.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else? Did you guys, you guys just drive up from, from your 5:30 meeting and just come?
Oh, yeah.
I haven't even seen my wife. Okay. Yes, Stacy?
Stacy Randolph, Gendron.
Yes.
I was just wondering if you could consider moving this meeting back to the high school or to a larger place? It just seems a little cramped in here.
Yep.
I remember when it was at the high school, we could fill that room. We have a beautiful high school, and we also have a beautiful middle school. Not sure why we're...
We are actually gonna discuss something a little later on, where we're actually gonna be rotating around. So, stay tuned for that. And Stacy will be joining us in November as a board member, if you did not know that. So, thank you for coming, Stacy. Yeah, go.
Karen.
Oh, I didn't see you thinking. Hi, Karen. Karen's also gonna be a member, uh, in November as well. So, welcome Karen, Karen Delfino.
So I have, I'd like to make a comment as a audit citizen, I guess. I also would like to thank everyone who went to Molly's. I was there this morning with her parents, and she, her parents are extremely grateful. And to see the amount of support our community has given Molly so far is huge. So, as a friend of Molly's, and someone who sits here and hears all the bad stuff all the time, I just wanna thank you all who were there and gave the hard work when it is needed. They are the best, come those kids. And I just want, as a person in this community, I just wanna say thank you. You don't hear it enough of the, how much you affect our kids, and it's valuable, and just thank you so much.
I wanna apologize then. I should've recognized you earlier. So, that's my fault. She asked to be, after we did the Pledge of Allegiance and the thing that she did ask, so, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. Anybody else, audience of citizens? Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, here are none. We're gonna move on. Board Correspondents and Communications.
Just one item. We received correspondence from Joe Iachy, board member, who is gonna be stepping down as Chair of the Facility Subcommittee and relinquishing chair duties back to Bobby, but he won't be on the committee until the term ends in November. How was it?
Thank you. And side note, thank you, Joe, for your service as a subcommittee chairman. Excellent job. We're gonna reiterate what I've said often in the last 12 months. This school does not open in the timely manner that it opened last year without Joe Iachy. He worked tirelessly to get us back into school last year, and frankly, it doesn't happen as soon as it did without Joe. This also includes town members, town board members as well. So I wanna thank you, Joe, for all you did last year to get us back in school. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion items. Budget transfer report from John Spren.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, John.
It's nice to meet you. Thank you. You should have in your packet a, a single transfer. It's for the purchase of lockers in this building here for $4,000. And the reason we need to transfer, we, this supplier really dropped the ball. This was a purchase we had planned to do in the last fiscal year, and there's some delay getting the paperwork in, and lo and behold, it didn't arrive until early July. And, uh, once the, the clock turns from June 30th to July 1, you, you really cannot put new orders in. If you did, the auditors would disallow it and probably reverse it anyway. But we needed the locker. So I'm working with Amy. What we'd like, what we're proposing is to transfer money from the instructional equipment line here into the non, into a non-instructional equipment line, $4,000 for the lockers. And, um, what we'd like to do is replenish this, replenish the instructional equipment money as soon as we can. But it's, uh, it's early in the year, July and August. Most of the plans are still what they thought they'd be, so it sometimes takes a couple of months before you begin to see balances. And Amy's been very patient with that. I'd like to thank her for agreeing to give up some instructional money so we could get the lockers in that are sorely needed. That's our recommendation.
We need to vote on this?
I don't, I think it's over 10.
It's under 10?
I think, I think it's over 10. We actually take a long vote, but I think it's perfect for you.
It's perfect for you, it's, I'll do it again. As long as it's under 10, nothing.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, go.
Are we gonna have 10-year transfers?
We were talking about the next finance committee meeting.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. With the plan. A little later on the agenda.
All right, so next discussion item is 2025-2026 Board of Education Goals. You know, Ralph and I have talked a lot about this, and then he actually sent an email to board members this morning regarding Board of Education Goals. I'd like to hear thoughts on our goals. But I am in agreement with Ralph that there are things that we need to get our ducks in a row in order for us to come up with that strategic operating plan, which includes, um, our climate survey and our, and our policy for climate. As you know, we were mandated by the state that we have any bullying complaint regardless of whether, you know, it's not even bullying anymore. If somebody just decides to say, this person said something mean to me, it has to be documented. We have to have the employees for all of that. We need a policy for that. We need to have a goal for that. And before we can have a goal for that, we need to have a policy for that and how it works. The other, our communications, our communications program, i.e. website, how we communicate with each other, how we communicate with parents, we, that needs to be stepped up in a very large manner. Because Ralph will tell you, as he's told me, that the first thing that came up during his administrative roundtable last week was communication plan. We don't have one. It's not very good. We need to come up with something like that. There's a third one, and I'm not remembering it correctly, Ralph?
It's also our evaluation, our teacher, administrator, and support staff evaluation system that we started last year.
Right. So, just so the board is aware, we have nothing in those records, correct? For most administrators, there's nothing in their file. So we have, we have nothing to base our evaluation on. We have nothing to, we haven't even approved a plan in order for us to evaluate our administrators. So that needs to, that needs to happen as well. This is a precursor, frankly, my opinion, and after many discussions with Ralph, this is a precursor to coming up with our strategic operating plan. We, our administrators need a little time to get stuff fixed, to get things in proper order so that we can actually come up with a strategic operating plan. So, um, let's keep that in mind as we're discussing, discussing things right now, that, you know, we also have brand-new superintendent, brand-new assistant superintendent. We have, we're gonna be hiring a brand-new business manager, and thankfully, John's gonna stay on a little bit and help out with that. So there's a lot of transition here that needs to get situated, in my opinion, before we can actually come up with that plan. Having said that, does anybody wanna have a comment? That's fair. I'm just gonna go around the table. Anything?
No, that sounds like, that's fine. I mean, we, I'm not really prepared for it. So I would, I'm just gonna let anybody see.
Okay. Vic?
Vic has something to say.
No.
Go on.
No, no. But, in the time that I got left to maybe other arrangements and stuff, I'd like to be part of the, uh, the planning, the SOP, since I was part of the original one.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think that would be important. We are where we are. Shouldn't be there.
Yeah, totally agree.
And, uh, that's enough.
Okay, go on. Thank you, Vic. Um, good. You're good. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I think we need time, we need a lot of time to, to work together as well with the new administration to make sure that we don't make the same mistakes with me.
Yeah.
Agreed. A meaningful strategic operating plan requires a lengthy needs assessment to make sure that it's not something that sits on a shelf and collects dust, so.
Right, like our current one does. You heard my opinion?
Yeah, I'm fine. But I, I agree with the game plan. I think you need to know, you know, we need to smoke tests. You need to figure out what the problems are. We have a lot of new administration at the top, so I think it's a discovery mode phase.
Joe?
Yeah, I agree. The only other thing I would say, and I don't have the Admin CBA on hand, but evals may be in there. There might be language with that, so we just have to be careful when we are putting that in implementation.
So, just one second, Sue, and I'll go to you. I would like to make the communications plan, the climate plan, the, was it the third one? I'm always forgetting the third one.
Well, the evaluation system.
The evaluation. I would like to make those goals. Right? And I think you agree with that.
Right, and, and, and just to kind of piggyback on it, and I probably should include it, that tonight was just the beginning of the conversation. We actually started at our retreat a few weeks ago, and then, um, the goal is to kind of get the big ideas now. Maybe we can draft them or bring them back for the work meeting on the 9th, and then the board would adopt them on the 23rd of September, you know? But like I mentioned to you, this, my email is that we have the district-wide evaluation system started last year, the plan, and the district school climate policy work started. We've done a lot of work at our administrators' retreat. We, we talked about it yesterday and at the building level today. But the new, the new items in our goal, developed goals would be a district-wide communications audit, development of a plan, and possibly, you know, acquiring an expert by the end of June, you know, because goals need to be measurable and attainable and those type of things, so. And then the last thing is to give Dr. Mullin and I the opportunity to, well, she's only been here two weeks, so we're, we're learning and from each other, but really get to know our staff, our community, and have those conversations with all stakeholders internally and externally is like, what's working and what's not working? And then report back to the board in spring, and then that can be the work for the strategic operating plan. But right now, it's just, the one thing that jumps out at us, where I've gotten it from the staff chats during the summer, the superintendent roundtables out in the community, is that, you know, we need to do a better job with our communications with all stakeholders.
And we have communications as part of the curriculum some page, so maybe we could start working with you on that page.
Yes, absolutely.
I worked on some, we worked on some of it. We're trying to get the website updated.
Yeah, absolutely.
But we, you know, I talked to Eric about scheduling meetings. Maybe we could start working on that.
Absolutely, okay. Whenever you're speaking, I mean, that, that.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Eric.
Uh, okay.
Sue.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Sue. I have one track.
We still have some work, right? And I was just gonna piggyback on that of just like, as you come across things that are not working, like your emails that you sent are very helpful, and just give us a heads up so I can start taking notes of things that, you know, start, you know, get my brain processing.
Yeah, communication with the board has been fantastic. So, appreciate that.
Okay, and then, you know, I didn't know if the board had any specific goals for itself, or we would merge the board goals and the district goals as, you know, three or four together. So I didn't know we can kind of merge them together. So we'll draft some language. We'll come back at the work meeting on the 9th, and then we can wordsmith it together.
Yeah.
So you have a plan? I agree. Everybody good with that?
And then I'll, once those are adopted, then I will formulate my own personal goals off of those.
Perfect.
And then I connect that then with the building and the district-wide leaders, and so we're all kind of moving in the same direction. All right?
So that, if nobody has anything to add to that, that actually takes care of 6C and 6D on your agenda.
So the, the board's goals and the district's goals, they should match, or is there?
Yes, absolutely. All right. 6E. Board of Education yearly meeting calendar. So if you pull that up, you will see that the Board of Ed has changed the way we are doing our meetings. We are no longer doing two meeting, two business meetings a month. We're doing a workshop meeting at the, at the beginning of the month in our first meeting. And then we are going to be doing our business meeting where we're voting on things in our last meeting of the month. The reason for this is very specific. The reason for this is because over the almost two years I've been here, we have very frequently voted on things where we had very little knowledge of, very little time to think about things. And that's the goal of switching things over from business, business, to workshop, business. Um, I think we're all in agreement. We've talked about this a couple of times over the, over the course of the last four or five months, that this is the direction we wanna go in. So that's how we're gonna structure meetings, uh, as long as everybody agrees. The other thing is, is at Ralph's request, and I actually agree with him, we're gonna be moving around a little bit in terms of where we're holding our meetings. We are going to be moving mostly business meetings, correct?
Business.
Business meetings to different schools. So the Tuesday, 9/23 meeting is gonna be at QFS. We're doing one at the end of October. It goes, and it's kind of, kind of go like that. One of the things that was, when we were looking for our new superintendent, and even one of the things that Ralph, I think, has heard quite frequently is that we don't include or we don't travel to other schools to understand what's going on in that specific school. So, our business meeting, most likely, is gonna be directly related to the school that we are in while we're having our, our business meeting at the end of the year. So, we're gonna be at all four schools. We will be at Central Office. At times, even at the, uh, there's a couple of times here where we're even there at the end of the month. So, as long as everybody is happy with what you're looking at in front of you. Do we, do we need what this? Yeah, we'll get with that. So, let's have a discussion really quickly. Actually, let's make a motion, and then we'll have a discussion. So, Mike?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2025-2026 Board of Education yearly meeting calendar.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds good to me. Is it just possible to get reminders that week of where we're gonna be?
Good idea.
I put it out there. If I'm at the wrong school, just.
So, I'm sure that, or Mike, or Vinnie could figure out a way to take a picture of this and then just put it in your calendar.
Oh, then if you just go on, maybe to my board and my family that you sent.
Your board email on your phone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make calendar.
Okay.
The other thing to be aware of is that our, our board docs' agendas have to be accurate or, correct? We have a problem.
Yeah, correct.
That's, that's the other piece to it.
I think it's a good idea. I think it also gives us the ability for the staff to come forward and shine and show us what they've got in the buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't really, unless you walk around school, you don't really know what's on the walls or what's in classrooms. I think this is a great opportunity for us to see all the work that everybody's doing.
Also, one of the things that was brought up during our superintendent's search, and Ralph has brought up during his meetings with, with people, is that our parents and our kids wanna see kids recognized. So that was a big thing. So if we're going into Q F S and goes and Oxford Mill School and the high school, that's an opportunity for us to, to recognize these kids, um, that are doing exceptional things. And it's a way to, you know, come up with a, with something that our parents have said needs to happen.
We've done it in the past, but they've come to us versus us coming to them, and it's, I think it's great that we come to them.
Yeah. Anybody else?
I thought you were going on.
Yeah, Vic, you're up.
When I first joined the board, and, uh, since I wasn't familiar with the schools, one of the criticisms that was offered eventually was to have a tour of the schools as a new representative on the board, so that you could actually go through the classes during school time and see the mechanisms, see the things that work, process. So it was very helpful for me, you know, I'm an idiot. You know, there's probably have kids in the school who are familiar with this. It's still helpful, helpful for everybody to go through the classrooms as a tour, that they can see what's going on. So I think that would be a, a good step forward. I know there's a process, you know, but what they gets handed out to the new representatives, which has been done a long time, so that you know some of the rules and regulations, so I think that should be also part of it. But, uh, on the rotating of the schools, I think it's fantastic. Part of the thing is that it should be some kind of guidelines of who's gonna be there from the school, department heads that represent those grade levels, okay? So that there's an interesting dialogue, because we had something similar at one time a little bit, and, uh, it didn't make any difference, you could've been in a closet, you know, because nobody showed up. So I, I think that's part of the, the procedure, is that the school is represented by a couple of different departments.
Thanks, Sue. Sue, did you have anything else you wanted to? Are you good?
Oh, actually, I mean, I totally had a different, kind of a different note, but the same. You had mentioned that you were gonna be doing meetings periodically in the schools and inviting board members to come. Is that still gonna happen?
Well, we, we have the, um, staff chats, and then, um, we have the superintendent roundtables out in the community. So, um, the ones in the building are for, um, the staff in the buildings. But, you know, I, I believe we have a procedure for what Vic is talking about, a tour of the schools and visiting the schools, so.
Because I, I've never actually, I, I did not know how to do that, how to go visit a school, so.
Right, and, and I just piggyback on what Vic said too. Is that, yeah, when I, before I brought this to the board officers, I had the conversation with the building principals. And really, um, it's really an opportunity for us to highlight students, uh, staff, what, uh, the P T O booster clubs are doing in their respective schools. And it also allows us to do the tour, but also highlight a program of services going on and that we can bring along the board. But whoever's attending the meeting, we can take a walk around the school and say, okay, this is what's taking place in this particular, uh, room or space. And also, it gives us the opportunity to have a conversation with the board about short-term and long-term needs of the building academically, but maybe, uh, physical space and things like that. So it really kind of, it's a win-win. It's really kind of showcase what's happening, um, every day in our school, so. And the, the principals were very excited to be able to tell their individual building stories. So, so we can kind of tie that all in, um, together. But again, it's, I think it's really important for the board to know what, what's happening.
Steve, got anything?
No, I'm good.
Deb?
I said my thing.
Good, didn't?
All set.
Yeah, I think it's great. Great. Okay. All right, so, all those in favor of adopting the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education meeting schedule? Say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right. So, next, we have twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six Board of Education committees. So with Joe stepping aside, I'm going to take over facilities for the time being. Once we have new members in November, that may change. But for now, um, I'm gonna take over the facility's safe school transportation committee. Curriculum, technology, communication stays the same. Policy stays the same, uh, finance, uh, the finance, insurance, and personnel is gonna stay, stay the same. We do have one change at negotiations. Um, and I talked to Dr. Marino a little earlier about this, um, that we should, it should be Sue on the para-negotiations, um, not Vic. But if Vic would like to be a participant in that, he's more than welcome to be a participant in that. No? Okay.
Aren't you one of those?
So Steve as well? So let's add Steve and Sue. Yeah, no.
That was a type, that was a mistake on ours.
So Steve? How many are we supposed to have? Does it come up?
It's up to you. Well, it could be.
You have a quorum of two, correctly, correct? Two members?
Doesn't trigger on board stuff like five.
If you have more than five, if you're five or more, it's, it's four, be careful.
Okay. Okay, so we cannot do five? Which means, three, four. We are, we're right on, we have to have one step aside.
On which one?
On para.
Well, no, there's one, two, three, four.
Oh, you took Vic off, okay.
That could be all.
But Sue took, Sue is on.
You can't have five. Are you sure, Steve?
Yeah.
I'd like Dr. Marino to discuss a little, as everybody's, as long as everybody's good with what we have right now, I'd like Dr. Marino to discuss a little bit about, in not active subcommittee, that he would like to reunite.
Right. Um, in preparing, you know, um, onboarding new administrators here at the district level, just, um, I went back to the bylaws, um, the Board of Education bylaws, and making sure that our committees are named correctly, so we cleaned that up. But then I stumbled upon the school business partnership, uh, committee. So, um, I believe this is an important, uh, committee to have, you know, particularly, as I mentioned yesterday, a convocation, um, the excitement that I left the, um, July Valley Chamber of Commerce meeting in regards to academic, um, um, business activities taking place in our community and the whole seven towns in the valley, that, um, in conversations with administrators, that to strengthen those partnerships between the school district and the community and the businesses. So, you know, we do have a growing business, um, sector, and, um, would love to have a board, some, a board committee to work with as a partner and figure out how we can strengthen that, so, because we all kind of need each other. You know, when we're looking at pathways and opportunities for students to work in our community, their internships and possibly jobs at some point. So I'd rather not do it alone, or Dr. Mullin and I do it alone, we'd like to have some board. Because all of you have been in the community for a very long time, so you, you could help us and guide us with that, so. Something to think about.
Would that be helpful to add to part of our goal?
Yeah.
Building that, that committee, and then, I'm looking forward with that. Since we haven't been doing it, it'd be something kind of like an easy goal to get to by one year.
Good idea, then. Vic?
I don't know what role I could, they didn't, uh, fit into there. But I was on the commercial development committee, mostly to do the things that we're talking about, was.
Which, me, I'm sorry, on a, for the town.
On for the town.
Yeah, what's the name of that?
Commercial development.
Commercial development, okay.
And, and the reason really for being on there was to look for avenues so that I could bring the school into that, through that board, into the businesses coming into town. So, um, if it's possible, I'd proceed with that, because I've really been pushing that for a long time. So that would, uh, could be beneficial. My term is up in November, so that'd be something, you know, kind of different. And, uh, so it's important, pathways, and, you know, having a link to the town.
So I've got one volunteer. I'm looking for a couple more. Sue?
I'll go.
Deb? Okay. And Mike?
Perfect, thank you very much.
And you have? One other thing, because you went through the committees, I didn't quite understand. I know Joe's not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be on the commercial club on the curriculum.
No, you're on it until you, until you, until you.
Step down, we're up the chair for real.
Oh, okay. I just want to offer out at this time where everybody's here, is that anybody that's coming in and wants to talk to me about curriculum and the seven, eight years of experience, I have a PhD and I'm fully vaccinated. And, uh, so, I'm available to sit down and talk and come in publicly. Thank you.
So we won't make Vic's phone number public on, on YouTube, but if one of the new members would like to talk to Vic, just, uh, meet with him after, after the, the meeting's over.
Or anytime.
And just get his number.
He will be giving you two tutorials.
So.
Well, it isn't that, it is. You would designate a chairperson, then that could be our point of contact to simple meeting.
All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Mike as chair, as long as Joe's okay with it? Because he's probably gonna move to finance when. In November. All right, that ends discussion items. We'll do action items. Seven A, approval of the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six Board of Education yearly meeting calendar.
We just.
We just did that. So we do not have to do that now. That's nice. It's always nice. Seven B, appointments, certified personnel.
We'd like to do them one at a time.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do it one, or, um, as the list is presented.
Okay.
Do you, Ralph, would you prefer, is Heather here? Okay. Elementary school art teacher, is Erica here? And I know. Dave is here? All right? Linda, is Noah here? I know him. Sorry, I missed your meeting last week. Not really, because I was in Harvard and I'm, I'm on vacation. So we'll do, um, we'll do the, the last three separate and the first two together? Does that sound all right? Or just do them all separate?
We'll do it.
Okay. There we go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first grade teacher, Heather Salzo.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the elementary school art teacher at Quaker Farms, Erica Roan.
Okay. Those in, uh, excuse me, discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? I'd like, sorry, go ahead, not good.
I'd like to make a motion to approve interim assistant principal at the Oxford High School, David Jurwitz.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Jesus. I don't know, thank you. Uh, any discussion on Dave? Didn't think so. Those who approve?
Aye.
Abstained? Or, sorry, uh, dissent, Jesus, I'm outspoken. And abstentions? Motion carries? Congratulations. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the director of special education, Linda Casella.
Second. All right, discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Congratulations.
I'm very excited. Thanks to everybody for your support. I'm so excited to work with this group staff and keep moving forward.
Dave, you want to say anything? You're good.
I want to say thank you very much to start it off. Uh, looking forward to, um, a great start to the school year, which has been the last two days. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to, to be in this position to make good things happen.
Anything further, anything further, or you don't sound?
Just really excited. Oxford is like a family to me, and I'm so excited to be part of it.
Cool. Last one?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the director of finance, Noah Linger.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
I just want to thank Dr. Marino and the whole board and the search committee for giving me the opportunity. Really excited to be joining, uh, the Oxford community. I am a, uh, citizen of Monroe, but, you know, heard wonderful things and looking forward to getting started here.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Welcome. All right, acceptance of resignation's certified staff?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the acceptance of resignations for certified staff.
Second.
All those in favor, or sorry, discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Now, seven D, approval of out-of-state field trip. And there's a detachment along with that. Ralph, could you talk a little bit about this?
Yes, this is, um, oh yeah, Ellen's here. Ellen can do it. Ellen can do it. Yeah, this is the middle school trip, we're doing all right.
Hi, everyone. So, um, we wanted to go to Boston for one night. We have historically gone as in a day trip, um, for like an extended. Before I came to Oxford Middle School, went to DC for an extended period of time, so we're trying to get that back in. We have teacher chaperones, um, just trying to elongate the experience for our students and aligns with their current social studies. We'll hit the museum science as well in Boston, um, as well as the aquarium, which aligns with science and STEM. So just looking to get that experience for them back on the books. Questions?
I do, but do you want to make a question first?
Uh, let's make a motion during, do it during discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip that's attached to an agenda.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Um, chaperones? How many per student, or how are you arranging?
So right now, we have about ten staff members, including Mr. Rich, who is the interim assistant principal, who are gonna be going. So the staff, the need for chaperones will be based on the number of students that sign up, but we'll stick to, I think it's a one to ten or whatever the policy says. If we need to reach out to families or parents to chaperone, we'll certainly do that and follow those protocols.
We, probably a stupid question, how do we vet people that don't work at the district?
So we have a volunteer procedure that we follow, um, that's fingerprinting, depending on how much time they're spending with the kids, because it's overnight, they'll get fingerprinted through the police department and follow those, those steps. So.
Where are you gonna step?
Uh, but, well, right now, the, this is in Menford, man. That's where it's listed, it's where, with the city, so.
And one more. So is there anything, um, because of the prices, or any, any plans to do any fundraisers for kids that might not be able to?
Yeah, we can certainly work on that, depending on need, right? And so we'll have to come back to you, right, for a request for fundraising, please send what student's name, but we'll certainly work on it to make sure.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm, oh, A three, nevermind, that was my question. All right, anybody else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
Great, thank you.
Take over.
Okay, bear with me as I read this motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the suspension of board policy fifty-nine-hundred fundraising activities administrative regulation, number fifty-nine-hundred dash R, pursuant to Board of Education bylaw, number nine-three-one-four, for the limited purpose of allowing the quarterback club to conduct door-to-door fundraising during daylight hours for one day only on Sunday, September seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Second. Okay, discussion?
I just kind of want to piggyback on what Lisa said about this. Just making sure that we do offer it to other sports, if soccer wants to go door-to-door selling, like rental tickets or whatever they're selling. So, I mean, I don't know how we would figure that out a weekend, a month, or whatever, or how you're gonna keep approving and disapproving the policy.
So as long, as long as the procedures that were followed for this particular one are followed in the future, I don't see a problem with it, right? Just one second, okay? So we'll take it on a case-by-case basis. But I, you know, this is, this is about student safety.
Well, yeah, I mean, I remember the neighborhood was on the one day. I mean, we don't have any neighborhoods really conducive to walking, there's no sidewalks or anything. And you know on Facebook, anybody who has a stranger come to their door, they freak out. And not very often, or very often, they're saying they're gonna take care of it their own way, and we know how that means, not for.
Yes.
So, uh.
So all of what you just said was actually put into the decision-making process that Ralph went through.
Would it be announced somewhere that the kids will be going out that day, or like, still be in town, be aware?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's in the, um, it's in the documentation, what they have to do.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, and I, though, I don't, if, uh, anyone else wants to be considered, we just need enough advance notice to hit our meeting schedule, because I do not have the authority to suspend the policy, the only the board does. So, um, you know, we'll make sure Heather, um, the high school or the principals, well, actually, it's only the high school. I would not really, I would not, I'm not in support of, you know, P through eight. This was a high school, and, um, but the, the board policy is locked, like, there's no wiggle room whatsoever. So they required us to go to this level. We work with our school attorney on the mechanism, so our next business meeting is September twenty-third. So if anybody wants to do it, it would need to be approved on September twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm gonna give it to you, Lisa, just one, give me one second.
He answered the question.
Oh, he did?
He did.
Normally, like, this is kind of a, this is kind of a. All right. You can also look at the documentation on the agenda to see all of the steps that were taken in order for approval to be given. Okay? Does anybody have anything else?
I do.
Yeah?
Um, I think it's, um, a slippery slope when you start, um, suspending policies. Policies are here for a specific reason, to protect the district and the students. And I think that by starting to suspend policies for groups, um, just, it, it doesn't sit right. If we want to do something different, I mean, maybe, maybe they should think of a different fundraiser. But, um, last year, there were students that went out selling cards.
Yeah.
That actually, um, it didn't go over very well in some of the communities. So to have a day where you're gonna have masses of, of, have these kids go out, I, I just think suspending a policy for a fundraiser like this, for any fundraiser for a group, is just not the way we should be in. My opinion.
I think, I'll think, I, I have to agree with Deb. And there's other ways that they, they, the last few years, they've used social media. The kids, they know that these things are out there for sale.
The kids, they know that these things are out there for sale. So, you know, they can easily get to someone to buy them without going door-to-door. It's just going to be too hard to have everyone coming, everyone going. Once they hear one, one group's here, that they're going to be sitting at our door asking for another. Well, can I have a day? Can I have a day? And then we're just going to be going back and forth all day long.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right. Okay, so, motion was set. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So how many was that? Raise your hand if you said aye. All right, how many was that?
Four.
Well, I was thinking that too.
That's five.
Okay. Opposed? Three? Any abstentions? Nope, because the math doesn't work. All right, motion passes? Okay. 7F?
I'd like to make a motion regarding winter indoor track team for the Oxford High School.
Second.
Okay. So, before we go into discussion, Andre, AJ, is AJ here?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, um, so, last year, we, we've been running tracks since COVID indoors with Seymour, uh, because our interest was low. Last year, we sent over 12 students to Seymour, and they informed us that, you know, they, because of the size of their program and their coaching limitations, they'll only take eight. We had at least 13, if not more, interested this year. And I would hate to say no to kids who, you know, want to participate in extracurricular activities. We do have stipend positions for boys volleyball. So I would propose to have the boys volleyball head coach stipend of 5,307, allocated to the indoor track coach stipend, and the assistant coach of 3,641, allocated to an assistant for indoor track. Yeah, so that's my piece of advice.
All right, so I have a question right off the bat. We'll open it up to discussion. I know a couple years ago, right? There was a volleyball?
Question?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, where are we at with people that are involved with volleyball?
Last year, I put out an interest sheet, uh, for anyone who was interested in playing volleyball. It was made over the announcement, as well as broadcast over the TV in the school. And I had two students who were interested.
That's it?
That was it. And we even did it for lacrosse last year as well.
Right.
We had a total of two students for lacrosse who were interested.
So?
So, ideally, we would put out the interest form, and we could always bring back a stipend if we needed it, right?
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, so, Deb?
You had a motion?
Yeah, I did. He did it. It was seconded by Joe.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I didn't screw that one up. All right, um, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? Thank you, AJ.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, just a second. Regarding cross-country head coach stipend to be split to allow for two co-head coaches.
Okay, uh, any discussion on this one? So if you, just really quickly, if you look at what AJ has provided us, there is not an increase in cost. He's basically equalizing the payment to each coach. That's correct, right?
Yes, sir.
AJ, you want to say anything?
Not much needs to be said. It's just student safety, um, you know, and it's allowing one in district who is less experienced and one who is, has vast experience, allowing them to work together.
Okay.
How many are on the team, though?
Uh, there are 16 signed up. There are some that are still on vacation who haven't come back.
And when we were there, there was only two. So that's pretty impressive.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second. We've discussed. Anybody else have anything to talk about? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries? And AJ again?
Two more.
Are these separate motions, or are they one?
Possible action regarding donation of athletic, are you saying funding? Is that two separate ones, do you think, or you want to?
I mean, we can, however, however you want. Yeah, I...
Let's combine them. No, we can't.
Our donations separate.
We can't because we have to have town permission to, to see if they want stuff. Is that what's going on? Adding advice in the?
No, yeah, for, for that part, I guess we should go through the town. So it'll be more the, the funding piece would.
Okay. Why don't you just give us an overview of what's going on, AJ?
Yeah, so, uh, we, the, the board approved the athletic budget last year, which included funding for new cheer mats. Through discussion with the head cheer coach, uh, she has been in contact with Kennedy High School. Kennedy High School does not have any cheer mats to practice on. So our girls wanted to donate the cheer mats to Kennedy High School. So that's where we have the cheer mats. And then we have an eyesore on, right behind our baseball field, it's an old batting turtle. If you don't know what the batting turtle is, what goes over the hitter's head when they're taking batting practice so foul balls don't go backwards. It's torn up, holes are bent out of shape. It's, I, I looked at the pieces that are missing. It's at least a $500 repair. We do have a brand-new one that we've been using for the past two years. And, uh, the head coach in Derby asked if we would be kind enough to donate that to their program, and he'd be more than happy to use his own funds to rebuild it because we don't, you know, we don't have a, a need for it.
The guy with the $20 million facility? Really?
So that was, that was...
Sorry. I, I had to take that shot.
And that's third action is about fundraising?
Yeah, it's, it's not fundraising. It's, um, so, the, the padding in our, in the gym, um, it's usually standard policy for the padding against the walls in a gym to be the length of the basketball court. So that way, if student athletes are exerting maximum effort and they are, you know, they do run forward, they hit padding instead of a wall. I did the measurements. We have 403 square feet of wall that has no padding on it. The price of the padding will vary with, you know, the thickness, with the installation. There are some doors that also come into play, so that would require a different type of padding. Padding can run anywhere from $15 to $60 per square foot. So you're looking, realistically speaking, about $6,000 or so, just to make it a safer space for, you know, volleyball for unified, for PE classes, for your basketball teams, you know, just to be able to participate, um, you know, safely.
So this is not just for interspastic athletics? This is for gym? This is?
Correct, correct, yes.
But you're asking, so what's the question on that?
Um, the, so the basic question that I was asking is if there is any way, how could I go about securing funding? Or is there something in a fund, in, in the surplus fund that we can use to add the padding?
That one's hard to take, uh, I mean, we can do it during discussion, but without a vote in hand, it's hard for us to allocate funds.
Okay.
Is there any opportunity for that to get, I don't know, you know, sponsored or anything like that?
Brand?
Um, so, but, over the summer, I was able to get some sponsors to put up in the gym to replace the old wall padding. I can go that route, but I do know that there is the Booster Club, and there also is the Quarterback Club that uses townwide sponsors in order to support their programs. So that is something that I'd have taken into consideration before reaching out, uh, to any other businesses.
So, did you have some?
I see that, then we can also just take it to the finance committee as well once we're out.
A quote.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
I'll get a direct vote, and then we'll have that.
We can go through finance, or the finance committee on that.
So was, was this recent that we told guys about the padding, that we didn't budget for it? Or did we budget for it and it got cut?
So, I, no, I was told that it had been, uh, I honestly, I didn't really even notice it with the whirlwind of everything that came into last year until after the budget had already been settled on for last year. It was well into the spring, so I did not even attempt to implement it into the budget.
So we could, we'll table that specific one. There's two other things we need to talk about?
I'll start with the first motion. I'd like to make a motion. Can I ask a question? Yeah, because we have a list that's going to the first selectmen on, um, declaring surplus. I don't think we can do, if I understand the policy correctly, I think the first selectman has to declare the old cheer mats and the baseball turtle, right? AJ, because we have, we have a letter we've worked on.
Yes.
Right, so I think that needs to go on there, and then we can ask the town if they can earmark it to these two groups. If I understand the policy correctly, because we already have a list of discarded uniforms, helmets.
So do they have a town and then? So it means...
No, I think, I think it's listed to town.
It has to go to the town. They have to, um, we have to give them the opportunity to take that.
Correct. Correct.
That's the way it has to work, right? And we can't...
I think this means that we had to show our letter.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's 15 days to respond.
Yes.
So we have to make a motion first, that's, yeah, sending it to the first.
Well, I already did a whole list.
It says superintendent send a letter. Yes. Right?
Yes.
No, uh, superintendent or his or her destiny shall notify the first selection of the town of the equipment or materials approved for schools, and we shall request a request.
We already have a list going. We just, we just put these two on that list. And then we could ask the town whether they consider these two organizations.
When we first heard from Soray Oak and Turner School, the motion to approve sending...
Same thing with the horse.
Say it in there? It...
Same thing with the truck.
Like, we did trust...
But just say if he approves it, you can do it as you want with it. As long as, as long as it's...
But he has to prove a person.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. All right, so we...
Ultimately, the surplus for that missed.
Because he has a list of others that transfer.
Yeah. Okay, yep. Anything else we need to vote on on this? Because I'm a little, my head is spinning.
No, I, I think the three items, one of them we're tabling until we have a vote again.
Yeah.
To be able to take action on. And the other two, we have to wait for George to side off.
Correct. Okay, all right. So, having said that...
I promise the next one will be good for here. Yeah, it doesn't have to go to anyone else.
Well, you're always, anytime you, you're getting rid of something, you, we always have to go to the town.
I'd like to make a motion regarding this restructure of the strength coordinator and strength supervisor positions.
Second.
All right, discussion on this one? AJ, do you want to?
Yeah, so, very briefly, um, we have two in-house candidates for strength and conditioning positions. There was a strength and conditioning coordinator and a strength and conditioning supervisor. One was budgeted $4,000, one was $2,000. Um, I used the athletic funds to purchase a strength and conditioning program, so there is no need for a coordinator, because the coordinator would have implemented their own programming. So I have two individuals who both coach within district, who both have children within district, who are, you know, they have their coaching certifications, CPR certifications, who are willing to supervise the weight room during hours of which the strength and conditioning program will be running. So rather than paying one $4,000 and one $2,000, I was asking for that $6,000 to be restructured into $2,000 or $3,000 segments.
And they, do they, they work with all the teams?
Yes, we work with every team. During the fall, it's primarily, uh, we use, it's all middle school, all high school. We recommend three times a week for any out-of-season athletes, and for in-season athletes, we recommend twice a week. If you're not doing it as a team in season, you must have your head coaches written permission to be a part of the program. And we offer 6:00 AM, 2:15, 3:15, and 4:15 each session as an hour.
I'm going to turn to Mike real quick. I know Rich has his, Richie has his own strength and conditioning thing. Is this, uh...
That's handled by the team, so this would be independent of that.
Well, this is, yeah, so we've already...
Just asking the question.
Yeah, we've already worked that out. So I know that, um, when teams, teams have first right to the weight room. So I know football is in there on Tuesdays from 2:30 to 3:00, and I know during the winter, they'll be in there from 2:30 to 4:00. And then, uh, the teams always get priority. So the basketball team already has, the boys' basketball team has Mondays at 3:15. So every Monday at 3:15 is only boys' basketball. Other student athletes who are out of season, if their team is not choosing to participate in it, they, we have power school signups, the same way we do report card conferences. So people can go in and they sign up, they sign their child up that way.
Yeah, that was, like, so you're giving in, in-season teams priority?
In-season or out-of-season. Entire, if an entire team of coach reaches out to me and says, listen, I'm hoping I can get every single Thursday at 2:15. They get every Thursday at 2:15. You know, in-season or out-of-season. I go teams first, and if there are other student athletes who wish to participate in the program and hours that teams do not have the weight room reserved, then we work with them.
Okay. We have to make a motion?
I made a motion.
We have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion, other discussion from the board? So, okay, here none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries?
Thank you.
I don't, we don't need a, it's, it's in this contract that it, it goes to the board, but I don't think we need to formally approve it.
It's just superintendent, just like fortune, and no one's going to know. We haven't done that in the past.
Might have been worded funny, but, yeah, that was, you know.
Okay. So we are going to move on to report superintendent?
Yes, um, hard to believe, it's almost showtime here for our students on Thursday. Lot of excitement in our schools. We had convocation yesterday. Today was day two of our professional learning. And, um, I just want to thank some, some individuals. First, first and foremost, I want to thank our custodial maintenance staff for getting our schools ready. They're, I was in all the schools yesterday and today, and they're shiny and ready to go. So, uh, mega kudos to all of them. Also, all of our 12-month employees, I recognized them yesterday. People really don't realize all the work that goes into wrapping up a school year in June and then beginning a new school year, uh, in August. So, um, really appreciate all the hard-working 12-month employees, uh, getting our schools shut down and then reopen. And Mr. Williams for putting together our three days of professional learning. He's worked all summer. Amy's helped him as well, and other people that, um, helped him out. But, uh, it takes a lot of work putting together three days of professional learning, uh, for our staff. Yesterday, uh, we had a wonderful breakfast and lunch. Our food service department is just top-notch. Uh, our staff, they were very hungry yesterday, so they went through a lot of food, according to Jen, uh, in there. And also, I just want to acknowledge our hiring committees. We did a lot of hiring this summer, so we had a full staff, um, throughout the summer to support building-level hiring and district-level hiring. So I really appreciate people giving up their time and, um, coming in to help us make the selections for our new staff here. And then lastly, you know, as you know, we have two robust summer programs, and, uh, a lot of our staff, um, work our summer programs. They wouldn't work without them, so I really, really do appreciate that. And we are very, very ready for our students on Thursday. And that kind of leads into staffing. We're very close to all of our positions, Bill. We have a couple left that we're putting the final touches on, some teachers at the building level. But, uh, again, the principals and directors are working tirelessly, trying to get that all into place for Thursday. And if not, we'll have it covered, and then, um, some people may have to give 30-day notice in the other districts. So, we got some late notices of some employees who left here, so we're kind of stuck a little bit. So we're kind of stuck a little bit, but we'll, a lot of people working really, really hard to make it work. That's it.
Okay, uh, my report. Um, so first and foremost, I want to, um, welcome all of our new people. Got, what, five or six today? It's been a whirlwind of a summer for Ralph. I think he's done a good job. Uh, I want to reiterate how, um, I, and the only word I can think of right now is proud I am of this district and how we've dealt with what's going on with Molly. It, it really shows how much everybody here really cares about each other and making sure that everybody's getting support and happy and healthy and, and all that stuff. Um, other than that, um, you know, I really don't have anything else. I am going to get up to speed between Joe and Mike Dattistino with facilities, um, stuff. So I'm not going to have much of a report on that in a minute. Um, although Joe would like to say a couple of words, I'd appreciate that. But I'm really looking forward to, um, the school year and seeing how things go normally and not when we're having to repair roads and, and all that good stuff. It's, it's really nice to, to have that type of situation rather than the situation we had last year. All right, um, so we're going to move on to, uh, committee reports. Joe?
So the bathroom project at high school is nearing final completion with the help of the Booster Club getting their equipment out. Uh, we were able to pour a new flooring, um, taking care of that. That's all coming together and finalized, so, uh, we should be ready to go for opening day and partnership continues. So I appreciate everybody's help with that. That's it.
Deb?
Um, I'm waiting to get dates from Eric and, um, agenda items and look forward to working on communications through that as well. We usually meet the third Monday.
Third Monday.
Third Monday at 5:15. That's usually when we.
Um, so that brings, that's, thank you for saying that. That brings me to, um, dates for subcommittee meetings really quickly. It'd be nice if we could get a same day every month for every subcommittee so that we know what's going on. Just something for the board to think about and some committee chairs to think about down the road. Um, Nicole is not here. Anybody on the policy?
Yeah, I think we haven't, uh, met this summer. I know, uh, I think Garrett's been in touch and Ralph with Nicole, so we'll get back on our regular cadence. We're usually Thursdays at 5:30? First Thursday. First Thursday, right. Yeah, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty regular with that. Um, Deb, did you say the, uh?
Third Monday.
Okay, I want to update the chart. Okay, good.
Steve?
Yeah, so I met with John, um, did a little review. And we're, John's in the process of kind of retrofitting what, uh, Howard used to do for the, the monthly packet. So we're targeting mid-September to have the full prior year, um, analysis done and report. In that, we'll also probably have at least maybe July's current fiscal where we stand. Usually July, August, never doesn't really tell us much, right? Just what's encumbered on salaries and such contracts that we've signed. Um, so we're, we're in the middle, September will be in touch with specific dates. Yes, we can try to get towards a.
I know you're a little crazy.
Yeah, and also we got to figure out what day, whether, you know, it's John or no in the future. Like, what day, how many days we need to close, prepare to pack it.
Yeah.
And then we can preview.
Yeah, your date is going to go.
Kind of moves a little bit sometimes. But we'll try our best to get on a regular schedule. Uh, and congratulations to John, he successfully submitted state ledger today. So that's one pressure off of him broadly.
You're in it.
Dr. Moreno as well. Yes.
Um, all right, um, negotiations. So we are kickstarting negotiations with custodians. Um, that will be late September. Do we have a date on that?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, it's late in September sometime. So we'll be back in negotiating with them, paras. Uh, those are the only two, um, parties that we're currently in negotiations with. Um, and that is actually going to start tomorrow at 5:30 where we have a, um, get to.
Planning?
Yeah, planning meeting with Zach at 5:30 via Zoom. Um, other than that, um, there's not much else to report on negotiations. Um, and then, Sue? Boosters? Or would you like Lisa to do it?
Lisa. Oh, um, so I wrote a sense of news, uh, for the, going to the newsletter. We're going to be starting up, our first meeting will be November 3rd. We're going to have our meetings September, sorry. Meetings will be Wednesdays, so this way Dr. Moreno can, because we used to alternate Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but we'll just stick to Wednesdays before beginning of the month. So this way you can attend. We, let's see, our teams are all active with car washes. Um, they're going to rattle things going on. Basketball is doing a fun, uh, they're going to sell pretzels, which is a first, which I thought was pretty cool. We've done that. Um, we're going to do our annual bingo on October 30th. And what else? I think that's it right now. We already, we do have Festival of Trees planned for December 12th and 13th. I know Saturday's the, I think it's the, the 13th. So that's already in the works. We've got vendors already signing up. I think I have about 15 right now, so which is nice. So, and, um, so we'll be hitting up everybody to start looking for donations of trees and all that fun stuff.
Is there anybody here to PTO? Nope. Deb, you got any insight?
I'll be there. Yes, I really can.
What's that?